Welcome everybody and good evening. We are going to call the meeting to order if you can stand for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
... of the United States of America and in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a rare treat this evening. It's the Dreamcatchers Women's Ensemble led by Mr. Sean Clunin who will perform for us this evening. So, Mr. Clunin, how are yours?
This is the very first performance of this group. The Dreamcatchers is a new ensemble this year auditioning. We had about forty-five, fifty girls that tried out. We took twenty-eight, maybe one day a week after school, and we'll be performing on our oral concerts as well as some of the special events throughout the year. You get to hear them for the first time. We will obviously start with the national anthem because it's what we use. And we're hoping that they'll be able to do this at some of the sporting events later in this period.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars, o'er the perilous spires? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We have a whole song for you that was made by Led Deli. It's called Bring Me Little Water Silky and it features some body percussion. So, you'll see them making some percussion along with their bodies while they are singing.
Bring me little water silky, bring me little water now. Every little water silky, every little once in a while. Silky, come running, bucket in her hand. I will bring a little water, fast as I can. Bring it in a bucket, silky, bring it in a bucket now. Bring it in a bucket, silky, every little once in a while.
Mr. Clunin, if we could, if each student could say their name and what grade they're in, if they could speak up a little bit, that would be great if you don't mind.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a senior.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a junior.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a junior.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a junior.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a junior.
Thank you. Lot of talent there. For years to come, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Clunin. Thank you, students. Thank you. Next, we are going to have public recognition and that will be Dr. Johanna Vanata will recognize Mrs. Holly Michael, winner of the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award.
Thank you very much. Every year, the University of Chicago receives letters from hundreds of admitted students inspired by teachers who have literally changed the course of their lives through excellent teaching and mentorship. In recognition of their proud influence, the Office of Chicago Admissions grants the Outstanding Educator Award to teachers who have demonstrated exceptional dedication to the education and personal development of their students. True learning is a collaborative experience that requires patience, selflessness, and passion. We're pleased to announce that high school teacher Holly Michael has been selected to receive this award. This distinguished award has existed for more than three decades. Each year, the university invites entering first-year students to nominate an educator who has influenced them, changed them, helped them along the path towards intellectual growth. The university received letters from hundreds of students inspired by teachers who have changed the course of their lives, who have taught them to reimagine texts, delve deeper into problem-solving, and think beyond the borders of the classroom in the pursuit of their own education. Two thousand sixteen North Hills graduate and current University of Chicago freshman, Anna Aguilar Kosicki nominated Mrs. Michael for this honor. We at North Hills are so very proud that our educators go above and beyond to help their students reach their fullest potential. Mrs. Michael has been a dedicated professional at the high school for more than seventeen years, and it is gratifying for her to be recognized not only by the University of Chicago but by one of her former students. Unfortunately, Mrs. Michael is unable to join us this evening, but we wanted to honor her in this recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Vanata. Thank you. Congratulations to Holly Michaels. Thank you. Great job. We could now move on to board member comments if there are any.
Yes.
None? Joe?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate the boys and soccer team, uh, boys and the girls' soccer team. They both made the playoffs this year. This girl's first time ever. Boys play, I think, Alder Dice on Saturday. Girls play Monday in the first round of the playoffs. Good luck to both of them.
Great. Thank you for that. Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, I was at the musical last night. It was the first time performed, and it was absolutely fantastic. We had a hundred and fifty kids on a stage at one time, and it, you, I just can't say enough. It was fantastic.
That's great. Thank you. Any other board member comments? Mr. Yeoman?
Just wanted to report back that myself, yourself, Mr. Wilgus, and Mr. Nudi all attended the PSBA, Pennsylvania School Board Association Annual Conference at Hershey at the end of last week. And I'll speak only for myself in that it was a very good conference. It was the highest-attended conference in history. So, it was a, I attended last year for the first time and found it very worthwhile. And again, this year, to be able to speak with other directors from other districts around the state to, you know, to share success stories, to share frustrations, and learn through some of the panel discussions to see what some other districts are doing either innovatively or to hear about some of the challenges that they're having. It was a very good learning experience, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend. And I also brought back some goodies that I shared with some of the administrators from some of the vendors who were in attendance, so hopefully they'll be able to have some nighttime reading for themselves.
Sure will come on tomorrow. Thank you, Michael. Any other board member comments? See?
At the conference, I sat in on a couple legislative sessions, and the items that were dealt with were the pension reform program. At the outset, discussion is what would the legislature do in the next six days? That was back last week. The consensus was that they couldn't move either the pension reform or the charter reform legislation. Well, the day after we had the first meeting, it came up that they were going to be moving the pension reform program. Nobody knew what was in it, and I guess the comment was, if you remember, you won't find out what's in it till we vote on it. So, but the consensus is it's only going to affect the people and the new hires. They will be put into a hybrid type of 401K and a pension program we have. They will pay into the pension program their first fifty thousand dollars, and after that they would go into a 401K. Thing does nothing to relieve the current pension crisis. And then the second item was the charter school reform, and I don't know, I would have to say it's a D form. Supposing what's in the legislation, it will increase the charter authorization period from three years to five years. One thing that was added is at the end of the fifth year, the school, the charter school would have to show that it's, has a satisfactory performance record. What that is going to be based on, nobody really knows. It, I'm certain it probably won't be the average, say, the profiles of the school districts that's represented. Another thing I questioned legislative representative on was the charter school legislation in general, and I made a comment that I think they should separate brick-and-mortar charter schools out from cyber charter schools because they are different animals and different cost criteria. And the comment, a person who handles, writes the legislation is the legislature wouldn't go along with that. And I said, oh, I think they could probably operate one of these schools for like sixty thousand, six thousand dollars a student. She says, well, we've done some work and they, they think it would be about seventy-nine hundred dollars per student if, for the cyber charter school. But separating them out in the legislation right now, at this point in time, is not going to happen. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. No other board member comments? Okay. We could now move on to public comments on the agenda items. I don't believe anybody has signed up to speak on agenda items. We can now move on to approval of the minutes. This is a request for the board to approve the minutes from the September first, two thousand sixteen work session legislative meeting and the September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen legislative meeting. There's, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything from the solicitor this evening, Mr. Woodrow? Thank you. Okay, we can move on to the student representatives' report. Haley and Madeline will present their reports on the high school athletics and activities.
The girls volleyball team beat Taylor three to two sets on senior night. The team has six seniors on the team. Rachel LaCastro, Anna Tresser, Trinity Ryan, Natalie Schwer, Emily Quinn, and Ingrid Spear. Recently, the junior varsity team had a stellar performance at the South Fayette Tournament. They went ten and one in the tournament. Their only loss was in the championship game by two points. The North Hills varsity football team beat Artie's Valley this past Friday, twenty-one to seven. Tyler Brennan and Nick Santucci both had touchdowns. Ben Walter also scored a touchdown return from an interception. The football team will take on Franklin Regional this Friday at Franklin Regional. The girls varsity soccer team has qualified for the Whipple playoffs for the first time in the school's history. They clinched their spot in the playoffs after a four to nothing victory against North Allegheny. Elena Longjohn had three goals and Marissa Zupin had one. Luke Checo has made history for North Hills this year by becoming the first person in North Hills to start in the playoffs for each sport season, fall soccer, winter baseball, winter basketball, and spring baseball. He is also a member of the varsity football team this fall. The North Hills cross-country team finished their meet schedule on October twelfth. The girls team defeated Seneca Valley, however, lost to Knoc. The boys team beat both Seneca Valley and Knoc. The team will compete in the Whipple Championships at Cooper Lake on October twenty-seventh.
There are a lot of exciting things going on in North Hill School District this month. Eight North Hill seniors have been named two thousand seventeen National Merit Scholarship Program Commended Students. North Hills middle school teacher Joe Welch was chosen to be a presenter at the Three Rivers Educational Technology Conference. The high school's Hands for Service Club and Student Council have organized the first annual Monster Dash Five K and Spooky Stroll on October thirtieth at North Park Boathouse. Individual registration is twenty dollars for participants over the age of eight and ten dollars for participants under age eight. There is also a family registration option for four to six family members, which is sixty dollars. All proceeds will go to the local chapter of Make-A-Wish. You can find start times for the event and the link to the registration form on the school website. North Hills music department will be holding numerous events through October and November. North Hills Fall Collage Concert was held on October nineteenth in the middle school. On November second, the North Hills Marching Band will hold the forty-first annual Stadium Review Show starting at seven P.M. Attendees are encouraged to bring in an unwrapped toy to donate to Labor of Love Toy Drive. Lastly, North Hills Jazz Night will be held on November twenty-second at seven P.M. in the high school auditorium.
Thank you, ladies. We can now move on to education, and that would be Mrs. Bender.
Superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board accept one and two. The academic calendar for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year and the gifts to Ross Elementary School for the flexible seating options for the Twenty-First Century. I need a second.
We sure do.
Second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Three.
Prior to the vote, I would like everyone to know that I cannot vote for approval on the acceptance of gifts to Ross Elementary. It wasn't done in a correct manner. Asking taxpayers for donations is totally unacceptable for me. And of course, this has been looked into, and Dr. Taylor, excuse me, has addressed it and put together a procedure that needs to be followed. So, on that one there, I'm voting no.
So, you're, just so we're clear, you're just, the way it was handled, it's nothing, you're not concerned about anything illegal or anything?
Oh, yeah. The way it was handled, it was improperly handled.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll also vote no on number two.
And I also.
Okay. So, we got, you got those, Lori, Joe, Dee, and Kathy.
Oh, Dee.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have the three opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Orlean. Anything else before we move on?
That was Joe. Oh, was that me?
For education. No, I'm just saying, we're just finished up with education. I don't know if you had any?
Oh, okay.
You all finished?
Yeah, oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's all right. We're going to move on to athletics and activities. Mr. Muha.
We only have one item on agenda tonight. That's a request to approve the North Hills Competition Cheerleading to travel to Orlando, Florida to compete in the National High School Championship in February two thousand seventeen. That is the contingent upon them qualifying. Is there any questions on that?
Do you have any extra seats? It'll be in February.
Stay here.
I gotta stay. Okay. Are there any comments?
I have a concern. Excuse me. This trip is being requested by North Hills Competition Cheerleading Squad. To the best of my knowledge, and I've been around a long time, we do not have a recognizable competitive cheerleading squad. We have Seven Eight, we have JV, and we have Varsity. I would like to see that they come forward to the board, Ally Abbott or whoever, and have us accept a competitive squad as part of the North Hills Cheerleading Program in order for me to vote on this.
Any other comments?
The members of the, is it mandatory that members of the competitive cheerleading squad be members of the cheerleaders?
Recently, the PIAA has adopted competitive spirit as a recognized sport, and they now have WPIL and PIAA championships. It's happened over the last, I want to say, three or four years. So, it's not a mandatory activity for our cheerleading squad, but it is sort of a function of the cheerleading squad, and we've used it under the same umbrella. So, Ally Abbott does not receive additional stipends or anything for competitive cheer. It's just that our cheerleaders who participate in our events on football games, basketball games, so on and so forth, could then choose to go into competitive spirit as defined by the WPIL and the PIAA. Because it's a national federation-recognized sport, it now has a national championship, and that's what this is an extension of. So, those students that choose to participate can continue all the way to a national title.
How do they make this squad?
My question is, is it mandatory for a member of the competitive squad to be a member of the?
No.
Regular squad? Squad?
No.
Okay. Then maybe we should have them two separate sports.
The, I just want to make this clear. This doesn't mean they're making this trip. They have to qualify to make this trip. I mean, they're just asking if we qualify, we need approval.
Right.
Sooner than later. Okay. I just want to make sure.
By the time, by the time they would know if they qualified, it would be too late to come to the board.
Exactly. Okay. That's fine. I wish I understood.
So, this is why they do it now, contingent upon qualifying.
Got it. Okay. Any other comments?
No, but I still would like to see either Shelley Zimmerman or Ally Abbott come forth, put a memo to let us know how the tryouts they do to make the squad. If any, no district money should be given to the competitive squad because we don't really have them recognized.
Yeah.
And I'd like all the particulars on it, please, because as far as I'm concerned, we do not have a North Hills competition squad.
Kath, but you're asking for all those details. We don't get that from any other, any other activity. I mean, if you talk about how they try out, and we don't, we don't get that report anyplace else.
It clearly says here that there is no cost to the district.
Right. Now, I, you had mentioned something about asking?
About trying out.
Right. I mean, we don't.
Like, they don't have, if a girl doesn't have to be part of the current varsity JV squad.
Right.
Say Sally's just a junior.
Right.
She can come in, not being a current cheerleader.
Right.
Try out for the competition and make it.
Right.
There could be a girl that's on our cheerleading squad that tries out and she didn't qualify.
Right. That's possible because they're two different type of activities.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
They're two different type. However, the school board has never recognized this competition squad.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Is that, is that the case? I'm not saying I don't, I don't know if that's true or not, sir. I just don't know.
No, they were.
We've never, oh, well, when, I don't know, do we have to?
That's all I think that we.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we don't really have to.
What? We don't have to?
Yeah.
Okay. I.
Because there's nothing.
I mean, you can if you want to.
I mean, yeah, it's not.
Well, you know what upsets me is the fact that I get stopped a lot of times either by parent, taxpayer, saying, how come you did this? Why did you do that? I tell them, I didn't even know about it.
I mean, believe me, us school board members are not informed of everything, and I'm not
saying we should be. But then again, when you're out on the street, you feel like a fool. I don't know unless somebody tells me. That's what I've said.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor for the cheerleading squad to the Florida trip?
Aye.
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 Any, are there any no's?
No, I didn't say no. I said aye.
Okay. Okay.
I didn't say anything.
Is there, are there any no's? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Joe? Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Anything for Beatty at this point?
I have one comment. Beatty did display at the PSBA conference last week. They had two automotive mockups. One was braking system, the other was automotive computer analysis. Then also something from the health technology was the three-dimensional view. You put three-D glasses on and you looked at the various organs. You could look inside them. You could cut them up any way you would like. It was very interesting. And they did get an awful lot of play from the visitors there. They did a very good job.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to ask you to take personnel.
Well, I just wanted to add, just to recognize North Hill students named as Students of the Month, Michelle McDonald and Rihanna Yocum.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. And we'll do, move on to personnel. I'm going to ask Mr. Nudi to take that this evening in Mr. Kelly's absence.
There are three items discussed in personnel in executive session. Resignation, appointments, and change of status. Superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve personnel items one through three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nudi. We're going to move on to Mrs. Reed for policy. It looks like we don't have anything unless you help us if you want to add this. Thank you. As likewise with community and intergovernmental relations, Mr. Yeoman, is anything you want to add?
No items on the agenda. Just a quick reminder that we have our first meeting of our enrollment planning, public enrollment planning committee is on.
our enrollment planning, Public Enrollment Planning Committee is on Tuesday.
Tuesday. It's coming Tuesday. That's right. Okay.
At the, right here, right in this room.
Right in this room. Okay, thank you. Six o'clock.
Oh, six?
Six o'clock. Okay.
You know, the only thing I'd like to address in regard to that is, I've been on a few redistricting committees. The last one, not this past, but before that, Dr. Goodnack over saw it. And we were closing schools. And what I liked about it is, we all met at tables. School board directors could go around and ask questions at the table, what, you know, the parents believed in, and they could present us with a plan. It was informal, but I truly believe that they, everybody was heard from. I have an uncomfortable feeling when I'm sitting back here.
No, it's going to be out there, set up, it's not, you're not going to be set up up here.
Oh, good, good.
We're going to be down there.
Okay, thank you.
More like a discussion.
Yeah, more like a discussion. Okay, thank you.
More or less like our public budget meetings are held. Everybody's around a table.
We just decided to have it here because it's more room than putting 25 people in the boardroom.
Okay.
And that's your meeting, so have fun.
I would recommend everybody that could be here from the Board to be there.
Next Tuesday.
There's a lot we need to talk about with enrollment.
Right. All right. I will take Finance this evening, and Dr. Olesch isn't here, so there are several items on the agenda for Finance this evening. One is the General Fund Bills. Two is the Construction Fund Bills. Three is the Capital Project Fund Bills, and Four is the Budget Transfers. And Five is the Month of September Payroll Numbers for 2016. So I'm going to ask Items 1 through 5, I make a motion to approve Items 1 through 5 as submitted.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to Number 6. We have two taxpayer requests here with respect to asking for relief. One is, there's a request from PJ Minock Properties Company requesting waiver of penalty, interest, and lien cost and service costs related to late payments of real estate taxes from 2004 through 2009. I know we did discuss this at the work session, so there's no, no need to go back over it again. However, at this point, there are some costs that the district has incurred, and I believe there are lien costs and service costs. Am I correct, Mr. Hall, that we've paid those already?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I thought we sort of agreed, or at least discussed at the, at the, at the work session, that we were in favor of waiving the penalty interest due to the circumstances involved, but with respect to the cost of the lien, lien cost and the service cost, we would like the individual or the company to reimburse the district for those costs. At least, that's the motion I'm going to, does, does that work for us?
Yeah, it works.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, so really, the motion is to waive the penalty and interest, but, but not the lien cost and service cost, make sure that the company does pay those costs back because we've already expended those to the district. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The last one is the Board, there's a request from Aspen Village Homeowners Association for exoneration of all previous taxes, tax claim liens, claims, municipal claims, and/or charges of the North Hills School District for block and lot numbers 161B-70 and 161A-220. Mike Withrowell recommends this. The Allegheny County, the Allegheny County and Ross Township have approved these exonerations, so all we're asking to hear this evening is to, is to follow the county and township to go ahead and approve the exoneration of those particular lot and block numbers for the Aspen Village Homeowners Association. So I'll make that, I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Mrs. Spade, Support Services.
Okay, number one, accept donations of playground equipment for Westview. The Superintendent recommends an ISO move that the Board approves Support Services, item number one.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Before we close the meeting, this is the opportunity for anybody to make any additional public comments at the meeting here that is not referencing the agenda. Is there anybody signed up to speak this evening? Yes, sir. If you would be kind enough to go to the podium, state your name and address while you're doing that. Mr. Nudi will read our, our policy with respect to speaking to the Board.
We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the Board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation inasmuch as it provides the Board with an important source of ideas, as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. Board does reserve the right, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speakers and, and/or issues in the interest of preserving an orderly, effective public meeting. Personnel must submit in writing to the Board President for consideration five days prior to the Board meeting. Items dealing with Title 1 and Title 6 can be addressed. Some of your concerns can be immediately and quickly addressed following your comments. Others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you're welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest.
Okay, if you'd be kind enough, sorry to state your name and address for the record.
Chairman, my name is Ron Grubb. I live at 149 Grove Avenue. What else did you need?
That's it. Thank you.
Came here tonight, I, I came here a while back regarding an issue on literacy and looked to give a seminar. And I sort of scratched my head, and I think I came here a little ill-prepared for that type of lecture. So I went home and did some homework and additional due diligence, and came across a report that was done by the Pennsylvania Task Force on Economic Education and Professional, Personal Finance, Literacy Education. It was done in 2012. Is anybody here aware of that? That's, that task force? It was done, it was done over the complete school districts in all of Pennsylvania. And I studied it and, and read it and printed it off. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to give it to, to the Board to review for comments. Eventually, you know, a couple meetings down the road, discuss it in depth more, in hopes to, at some point, have the Board invite kids or invite the people that actually were part of this, this task force to attend a meeting where I can give a story to, you know, different kids from different grade levels. It really touches on the conclusion part of, of the, of the task force, really hits home on how, how personal finance and economics is not being taught. The, the schools want the parents to take more of an active role. The parents, there's like 87% of the parents want the school to take an active role in, you know, in teaching that. And it's, it's really, you know, disheartening when you read the conclusion of this, that no one's really taking the ball and running with it. And that's why, that's why we keep having recession after recession after recession. It's, it's getting to the point where, you know, the schools don't have the money to, to fund this. So what I did was, I have a, a plan where this can be funded, okay, very easily. So what I'm asking the Board to do is to read this, especially the conclusion part of it, and to, you know, discuss further down the road as to, you know, a possibility of, of inviting kids at every grade level, okay, to, to one of the Board meetings. And I tell a story, a very interesting story, only about 10, 15 minutes long. And at the end of the story, I'd like to ask a couple questions to see how tentative or how, you know, how much these kids truly do know as far as economics and finance. So that's what I'm asking the Board to do. At some point down the road, to invite, you know, five 5th graders, five 6th graders, you know, whatever, and mix it up and give, you know, kids that are, you know, exceptionally smart and bring kids that, that, you know, are not that smart, just mix it up. And then I would like to invite Sally Flaherty from the Board of Education. I spoke to her on the phone. She'd be willing to come down and sit at this, sit in this meeting and invite, there's a few other people that are listed in here, and invite them down to hear this. And then, these questions that I ask, to see how alert these kids truly are. And they're not, they're not offensive. They're not incriminating. They're just general worldly questions that, you know, I, I feel strongly that kids should know about economics and finance. So that's what I'm requesting tonight. You'd be willing to, you know, be willing to take any questions at this point.
You know what, if you don't mind, if you want to submit that to our Board Secretary, and then.
Sure.
You would be kind enough to at least provide something about yourself, your background, and some information, and we'll submit that to our Curriculum Council to see if it has any merit to move forward if we're not already, already addressing the issue in the schools, in the schools themselves.
Sure. What I'd like to do is, is, you know, down the road, I can, you know, show some of my credentials, you know, at any given time.
If you would, that'd be great. You could just drop it up with Lori.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
For, for this gentleman?
No, for Dave.
For Dave, before we adjourn, all yours.
Dave, I got a question. Has there been any interest in Seville or anything going on there?
Not recently, no.
Nothing at all? Okay, we're keeping it for that school. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I will then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.